Like to call the meeting in order?
It is in there.
Mrs. Burns, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
Mr. Parentano.
Present.
Mr. Allen and Mrs. Bowman are at the Tech Schools Board Meeting. Ms. Boyle.
My present.
Mr. Feather.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbeck.
President.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Marington.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
All rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The board met an executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, matters related to litigation, and issues related to school safety and security. The district mission statement, "The Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. We have a number of things highlighted in the Superintendent's Report for this meeting. I want to start with the Safe to Say Something launch here at Nishamani. I want to thank Chris Stanley, our Community Relations Person. He did a really nice job of providing both students and parents a brief four or five-minute video that did a nice job capturing how the new state system is supposed to work and how it's supposed to be used. And so that was shared with all of our secondary school students, middle school students, as well as our high school students last week. It may have been two weeks ago at this point. And we felt like our kids understood better because of the work that was done by Mr. Millian and Mr. Millian, our Director of Administration, and Mr. Stanley putting together the actual product. So I want to thank them. Also, Chris Stanley, not in the audience, this might be the... Is he here tonight?
He's in the back room.
Is he in the back room?
He's doing the video.
So Chris Stanley is coming now into the back, and I want to congratulate him. He's waving through the window there. Mr. Stanley is being recognized by the United Way of Bucks County as their Campaign Volunteer of the Year. He's going to be awarded that at a breakfast, annual breakfast, coming up next week, and we congratulate him for being recognized. He does good work here for us on many different fronts. One of the things he does do is coordinates the district's United Way effort. And this last year, he had a really interesting rivalry with the Pensbury Group. And so it was a nice way to foster some interest in competition, and it worked really well for us. National Honor Society at the High School's Alerted People to Look for Invitations to Join if you're GPA at the High School as a sophomore or a junior, is 3.75 or higher. Those students are going to be receiving those applications by the end of this month, if not already. Our Pre-K Counts Program is already accepting applications for the next school year. So for children who are three or four years old by September 1st, they... You are welcomed to already register for the upcoming school year. We have locations at the Albert Schweitzer School, the Joseph Fertabar School, and Lower Southampton at the Learning Center. We had an exciting day the other week when the Phillies Fanatic, the real Fanatic, visited Miller Elementary School. You can imagine, it's exciting when you're at the game and you're pretty close to the Fanatic. This is in your own school, in your cafeteria. The Fanatic came to celebrate the fact that our students were leading in the region here, one of the top schools accumulating hours of reading. And so it was fun for our kids, fun for the school, and Ms. Batelli's class was the top reading class, and so they got a special photo op, and she had opportunity to read a story the day that he visited to the whole group. Congratulations to the students and Mrs. Riperts and Kornicki's classes. At the High School, they hosted their second annual K-Hall Craft Fair, selling a variety of handmade products and with proceeds going to charity, to the local high school silo food pantry, and also to future field trips for the group. But it's a wonderful opportunity to interact and work hand-in-hand with our students and support them. We have a STEAM Expo coming up next week, Tuesday, April 30th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the High School. We encourage people to get out that evening for a wonderful chance to interact on the science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics front. It's a good night with our students leading the way. There's a Color Guard Camp. If anyone's interested in joining the marching band Color Guard or understanding more about it, six dates are coming up in the spring, and you are welcome to join Mr. Lipton's group out there. No prior experience is required. We did adjust the year-end calendar. That's something that already happened at a prior board meeting, but that was reemphasized here in the Superintendent's Report. Summer Stock Showcase, registration is now open. There's a link in the Superintendent's Report. There's a link on the district website if you want to get involved this summer in Summer Stock. There's three different age groups. The middle group is already closed out, as I understand, the upper elementary, but the younger students can still get in, as well as our high school students. And that's all I have. We have a presentation this evening I'll introduce in a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Maybe that's it.
No, you can do the presentation.
So we've been, this year, spotlighting our elementary schools. And so we've had four of our elementary schools before the board and here in public meetings, and today we have our fifth of six elementary schools, the Fertabar Elementary School. And I'd like to introduce their principal, Ms. Washam.
I am way too tall up there. Good evening, everybody. When Mr. Jones had asked me to select something that represents Fertabar Elementary and something that makes us unique, something that stood out to me when I came on board at the end of November is the amount of student leadership and student service that occurs here at Fertabar Elementary. And to highlight that is our Early Act Group. Not only do they have their own service that they work through themselves, but they've actually inspired non-Early Act members to form committees to meet with me during their lunch periods, to pitch things such as cleaning up our school community, for helping raise awareness for littering, helping donate toys to our local animal shelter. We have a doggy run going with our walking club coming up. And there's just... It's inspiring for me to see students coming up with ideas, organizing it, working with their families and their school and their community to make their school community a better place. So I'm going to turn it over to one of the organizers for it, Ms. McGinley.
Hi, I'm Mary McGinley. I'm a third grade teacher at Fertabar Elementary School. Ms. Quicklinsky and I are the moderators for the Early Act Club. It's actually a sponsored club by the Feasterville Rotary. They sponsor us for running the club. It's a service club. The students meet after school, and they also meet during the recess. It's a very student-driven club, meaning we're just the moderators. They come up with all the ideas, they implement the ideas themselves. First, they research ideas of service projects, and then they present them at the meetings, and then they vote on which service project they would like to implement. Next, they create Google Slides, they differentiate the slides for kindergarten up to fourth grade to present and introduce the service project to the community and to the students. They also help with the collection efforts. Ms. Quick and I are very honored to be the moderators of the Service Club. We are extremely proud of our students and how selfless they are and how dedicated they are to serve others. As you will see in their presentation, they truly exemplify the Nishamani mission statement of becoming productive citizens.
Okay, Rohan, should I have him come up first?
Good eve... Good evening. My name is Rohan, and I am the secretary... Recording Secretary in Early Act. I am here with all the representatives from Early Act, and they would like to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Eva. Eva, and I'm the community co-chair.
My name is Nadia, and I'm the school chairperson.
My name is Natalie, and I'm the recording secretary.
My name is Jordan, and I'm the community chairperson.
My name is Leah, and I'm the international chair.
My name is Nav.
What is Early Act? Early Act is an organization made up of students who help our community and help our world. The Feasterville Rotary sponsors our Early Act Club. We've worked on multiple projects during our fourth grade year at Fertabar Elementary. We're proud to be in Early Act, and here are a few projects we've worked on this year. L Fund. Did you know that some people don't get presents on Christmas or yummy turkey on Thanksgiving? The Fertabar L Fund raises money for those in need. Our school raises money for people that don't have enough food... Enough money to buy food and gifts. This year, the Early Act students collected funds and helped prepare the food boxes and gifts for Fertabar families in need. Retired Nishamani School District teachers and support staff came to... Came back to help the organ... Organize the food for our drive.
Kenyua is a worldwide organization that helps people in Africa who don't have clean water to drink. A family from Lower Southampton moved to Kenya to help people find clean water. They have been doing very well. They have made new wells and toilets for students and families in Kenya. The Early Act Club sold hearts and lays to raise money for Kenya. We sold lays for a dollar to raise money for Kenya so that... So they could have water near them. We found out about Kenya because Natalie and I used to be neighbors with the founders of Kenya. We raised money for them because they needed wells closer, so they didn't have to walk miles for clean water. We raised around $600. Kenya hearts sale. After... After the lay sale went so well, we decided to make a Valentine's Day themed sale to help Kenya. We sold a blue heart for a dollar with a Hershey Kiss. We... We made an additional $200.
Our school discovered FreeRice.com in the month of March when the Early Act Club met after school. We wanted to do something that didn't involve asking for additional money from families, but still help people in need. When we stumbled across Free Rice, we decided it was perfect... It was the perfect idea. We made slide shows for kindergarten through fourth grade. When we shared out, we had a great success, and the children were excited to do the math problems on the site and help people in need.
Have you ever wondered what happens to unwanted crayons? The Keston Organization discovered most unwanted crayons are thrown away, ending up in the landfill. Our school decided to collect the broken crayons along with other schools in our district and family tree organization to be recycled. The recycled crayons are donated to hospitals for kids.
Nursing Home. And many students from Fertabar are visiting Adobor... Adobor Nursing Home. The Early Act Club voted to create crafts to bring along with us. Thank you. These are all the things we have accomplished this year to help others. We enjoyed being part of the Early Act team at Fertabar. Thank you for listening and for your time.
Does anyone have any questions for our guest, for our students with this Early Act program?
I'd just like to make a comment and say how impressed I am with the amount of activities that you engage in and how much community outreach that you do beyond the school environment. I think it's great, and the young kids are leading the way into the future, and you ought to be very, very proud of yourselves. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
So I had a question. Roughly, I'm assuming this isn't everyone who's involved in Early Act. How many of you are there?
Fourteen.
Fourteen kids? All right, awesome. I think it's really... It's amazing when you can learn at a very young age that even folks who are your age can actually do something very positive to help this world out and to help people who need help. So again, to mirror Mr. Parentano's words, kudos to you guys. You're awesome, and it's great to see that you guys are empowered to make a real difference. So, well done. I may have missed it, but I just want to double-check. I don't know if I heard you talk about it. Have any of you gone out to the Rotary Meeting this year? Didn't happen this year?
No.
But it has in the... But it has in the past, right? Where some of our... I just want our board members to know that some of our elementary students in Early Act, in Fertabar in particular, had... With that relationship with the Rotary, actually will visit on... At times, the Rotary at their regular weekly meetings. And so it's a great opportunity. Yes?
Did you have some students go to...
I always think it's just a... Because it's interesting for our students to see that though they do these things in schools, that there are adults in our community who are also supporting and helping out others in the community. And so it's a nice linkage that happens when the Early Act works together hand-in-hand with the Rotary. So thank you so much. Thank you, ladies. We have certificates for you, so we're going to call you up. We're going to take a picture with you, your teacher, your counselor, your principal, so that we can put that out on our Facebook page. And again, thank you so much for coming out this evening. Okay, that brings us to the first public comment section of the meeting. Mrs. Burns, anyone signed up?
Uh, Mr. Rotis.
He signed up in abstention. Please give us your name, where you reside, and...
I didn't know if it was some kind of audiovisual equipment in there.
Yeah, that's it.
I had two things. I would like... I saw it on the agenda. I'm Steve Rotis, and I live in Langhorn, in the Village of Flowers Mill. I would like two things to be discussed. One is on the agenda, which is the reduction in the tax assessment and what will be paid by Oxford Valley Mall. Not only the amounts, but how it's going to affect every taxpayer family in this district. And I figure it's probably at least $40 to $45 a family just for... Just for the reduction. But I'm not sure how much the reduction in taxes is. The other thing that I wanted to... I read a little article yesterday while the internet was going through me, and it had to deal with districts which are switching over or have switched over to private profit... For-profit types of education in the school districts themselves. Not private schools, but the school districts are turning their learning over to for-profit organizations. And the article went on to talk about how, in the eyes of the residents, it was not a good thing, and they felt that they were taking advantage of the kids and the kids were not learning. And I just wanted to reassure myself from hearing it from the district that that is not what we are going to... And that's not the direction we're going. And we're going to have the teachers involved with the students at all times, especially in their learning, not just in reminding them what to do or how to do it. So I thank you.
That brings us to the Routine Matters section of the meeting. I'd like to make a motion... We're going to pull out 2.04 bids. Mr. Parentano is going to go through the bids. So I'd like to make a motion to approve items 2.01 Minutes, 2.02 Treasurers Report, 2.03 Check Register and Procurement Card Purchases, 2.05 Investments, 2.60 Exonerations, and that is it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second one, Mrs. Hollenbeck. Comments, questions, observations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The bids are under Section 2.04. Be resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the attached bids for April 2019. These bids are all related to recent items that have been discussed in our long-range facility plans under the Facilities Committee. The first is the NHS Main Driveway Transportation Area, Piquessing Middle School Driving and Parking Area. The awarded bid goes to Bray Brothers in the amount of $88,980. The second one is repairs to the east and west bleachers at the Harry E. Frank Stadium at Nishamani High School. The low... Excuse me. The awarded bid goes to Bill Atkins Company in the amount of $340,845. And the final one is the security vestibule renovations at Nishamani High School and Maple Point Middle School. The bid's awarded to Craft Source Inc. in the amount of $219,800.
Can I get a second on these bids? Second by Mrs. Boyle. Comments, questions, observations?
I just want to make a comment or ask a question. The one for the bleachers and the vestibules is work that's already in the budget, correct? So they're going to be done regardless, because that's already in there. The paved driveways for the high school and Piquessing is pending once we reach a final budget. Is that correct?
It is actually part of this current budget. You're causing me to pause because we're approving the bid. We're approving the low bid. So if you want to hold off definitively, that's 88... What was that number? Again. Eighty-eight thousand of what would be either... What we're... Right now have a $1.8 million towards projects this summer. This is a smaller project that requires some lead time to get up and running. So it's work that has to get done. It's on the long-range plan. We believe it to be work that'll be in the final product. So that...
I'm not questioning that. Is it in this year's budget or is it in that year's?
No, that'll be next year's... Next year's budget.
That's my question. Thank you.
In respect to Mrs. Hollenbeck's questions, all these bids did come in under what we originally thought they would come in, especially the one on the vestibules. That's going to bring all our schools up to now are going to have the same security vestibule access. It'll be completed in the... Since we closed out the roadmap consolidation project, these were the last schools to be done. We found the money to get them all done, so I think that's a great thing, and our staff were working hard to get those numbers down to where they are a lot more manageable. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, observations? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to Personnel Administrative. Mr. Parentano.
Thank you again, Mrs. Sullivan. Section 3, Motion 3.01 Appointments. Resolve that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the appointment of Timothy Hunt to the position of Assistant Principal of Piquessing Middle School effective July 1, 2019 at a salary of $130,050.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Feather. Comments, questions, observations? I'll take that as an observation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Congra...
Mr. Hunt, you want to stand up so everyone knows who... Thoughts to know who you are? Congratulations. There was also a young person. I couldn't see him tapping you on your shoulder when the name Timothy Hunt was called out there. There you go! Congratulations. We'd like to welcome Ryder, too.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.01 Retirement's Resignations End of Assignments, 4.02 Leaves of Absence, 4.03 Revised Leaves of Absence, 4.04 Revised Return Some Leave, 4.05 Appointments, 4.06 Co-Curricular Appointments. That's it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Parentano. Comments, questions, observations?
I'd like to take this opportunity to say thank you to a few teachers here that are retiring, a few of which have had my children through the years. We enjoy tremendous relationships with them, as well as appreciating the hard work they've put in over the years. Mr. Frank Litschner, 22 years of service. Ms. Lynn Leesner, 24 years of service. Ms. Deborah Mithnickel, 31 years of service. And Janice Messenger, 33 years of service. Have a great time, enjoy that retirement. It's been a long time. Thank you.
We didn't vote on it yet, right? We didn't vote on it yet. He sidetracks me. Imagine that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, motions pass seven to zero. Personnel support, Mrs. Hollenbeck.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 5.01 retirement, resignations, end of temporary assignments, 5.02 leaves of absence, 5.03 revised returns from leave, 5.04 appointments, 5.05 co-curricular appointments, and 5.06 ancillary appointments.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Kovacs. Comments, questions, observations? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Educational development, Mrs. Boyle.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.01, which is overnight trips, 6.02, it's home-bound instruction, and 6.03 is out-of-district placements.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second one, Mr. Pierrotano. Any comments or questions or observations? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 7.01 tax appeal for Oxford Valley Mall properties, and 7.02 Sunday facility usage.
Can I get a second? Second one, Mrs. Boyle. Mr. Torrente, could you speak to the 7.01, the tax appeal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. With respect to the tax assessment appeal for the Oxford Valley Mall, it only has to do with the parcels regarding the main mall, the Sears, the J.C. Penney, the Macy's, and the One Valley Office Building, okay? The Lincoln Plaza Shopping Center is not included in this appeal, along with some other ancillary parcels surrounding the mall. The net effect to Mr. Rotis's question for the school district going forward, this is for, I should, I should back up, 2017, 2018, and 2019 are, are the appeal years. Going forward, it's going to be just shy of eight hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue to the, the district loss per year. Now, for 2017 and 2018, the tax refunds collectively for both years, two hundred and fifty-one thousand for 2017, and in 2018, five hundred and twelve thousand, a total of about seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Half of that is going to be paid by July 1 of 2020, and another half by July 1, 2021. Okay? So what we're looking at here is, these are numbers essentially based upon the appraiser that the district hired to assess these properties in the mall, including the Sears, J.C. Penney, and the Macy's. The net effect, fair market value-wise, we're talking about three hundred and ninety-five million, which is what they were assessed at, fair market value-wise. Now it's going to be about three hundred and four million, okay? So if you're looking at these assessment numbers on the motion, ballpark figures for each year, if you just multiply those numbers by ten, that's, gives you about what the fair market value is every year, okay?
Could you expand on that just a little bit farther? Last meeting, we had a discussion about the major employers and major property owners in the district impacting our tax base in a negative fashion as we've, we've just explained here, and we had some discussion over our nonprofits, and I believe I relayed some, some incorrect information. Can you correct that, please?
It was regarding St. Mary's Hospital. The hospital itself, I believe, is over ninety percent exempt, but the office buildings there, including the rehab facility that the, where the land that the school district used to own and sold to St. Mary's, that is taxable, so. So it's just, it's, it's about ninety-five percent taxable, or I'm sorry, exempt, the hospital, yeah.
So a small portion is taxable.
A small portion is taxable, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Like to make a motion to approve items 7.01, 7.02, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, right. We do, but the end result's not good. Motion passes seven to zero. Any other board business? This brings us to the second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach the podium. Introduce yourself again.
Good evening, I'm still Steve Rotis, and I still live in Langhorne, I hope. Now, this is like three-quarters of a million dollars that we're talking about, and what does that equate per homeowner? I think we have twenty-five thousand taxable properties. So, what is that? Thirty, thirty dollars before we get to, I mean, this is totally with that, not within our control, and that's before we accept the budget, which will probably have some negative features to it in the way of taxes. So I just want, you know, I think that the homeowners should know that it's, that things are now no longer within our control, and we're just paying money out on things that we have no control over, and yet we have to come up with enough money to fund everything we're doing. And I think what we're spending it on is the right, the right things, I just feel badly that this may not be understood by the general public.
Mr. Rotis, in response to that, as Mr. Sullivan and I were discussing earlier, it's really a budgetary impact overall. It's, while it's not going to be a direct, you know, thirty dollar for the medium, it's going to be blended into the budget, where we can save money, where we can't save money. So it may not be an exact thirty dollars. I don't like it either, believe me, nobody on this board wanted to vote for this, but we have, we have no choice. But it will shorten our taxables by that much moving forward, and how we make that up in the budget, it's going to be up to Mr. Jones and, and the, the Business Department to see where that, that can or cannot be made up.
I mean, from what I have seen, they've been doing a very responsible job on the budget, however, when this gets, you know, all schools are in the same position. When it gets transferred to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it falls on deaf ears. They just don't fund what the school districts need, and I think that there should be something between the superintendents, the, the school boards, the organization that they have, to put some pressure on the state representatives to do what they're supposed to do. I mean, the people can't keep running around with buckets to, we did that in the past. We never, you know, because the first thing that gets cut out is fixing up the buildings. And, and I think that it's, it's really important that going forward, we approve the budget and, you know, get on with education in the way it should be done. Thank you.
So, Mr. Rotis, there, I don't think you'll find anyone here on the board that has an argument with what you just said. This is, this is the lament of being on the school board. It's the, the part that's just, it's, it's not sexy, but it's what we have to deal with. Being squeezed by piecers, being, you know, and again, but there is one thing that I noticed in what you said, and that is, we do a lot of running around just to, to make the, the school district work. We work in partnership with the administration, the, the teachers, the support unions, you know, the various unions that, that make this possible, but the only thing I could, I could suggest is, it takes more than just us to understand. And I, I appreciate you being here to point out the crux of our major problem, or at least the ones we have, or the challenges that we face. The big thing that I would urge everyone here, if this, if this is making sense to anyone here, is talk this up to your state government, to your, you know, to your local representatives. Talk to them, tell them that you're concerned, you know? This is the, the fight that all of us who believe in public education are fighting right now.
Thank you. I, I just want to say, unfortunately, the only way you get their attention is to vote them out of office, for whatever reason it is. That's the only thing that gets their attention.
Okay, we're good. We're getting too political now.
I just, I would just like to add to what, you know, piggyback on what Adam is saying, some statistical evidence as to where Pennsylvania stands as this Commonwealth and support of publication, public education. For the last ten years in a row, we've been in the bottom ten out of fifty states in the government's support of public education, and we were in the top ten in property tax in support of public education because we get so little bit from the state. And, and if you want to go in and talk to state reps and remind them that Pennsylvania should not be in the bottom ten in support of public education, I think that would be very, very helpful. And, but they need to hear it over and over and over again from many, many sources, not just us, because I think we're all preaching to the choir here, but students, you know, other people in, in the community, taxpayers, all need to just keep reminding them of how poorly this Commonwealth supports public education. We're just barely above Mississippi, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Dave. That brings us to the public comment section, which I think we already started. The, the board comment section, I'm sorry, so. Any, any, any more public comment? Please approach the podium. Name, where you live.
Andy Warren, Shady Brook, and, oh, Borough Coordinator. I wasn't going to say anything, but just following up on this general discussion, does the board see this at all as a preview of coming attractions, as I look at Sears, J.C. Penney, Macy's, these big stores closing down, perhaps because of people ordering by email and all that jazz? And is the board saying, whoa, there's a tsunami maybe preparing, and we'd better look at a two or four years out if this continues? Which is just another way of looking at it. If J.C. Penney, Sears go this year, will the smaller, big stores go next year, and we're still holding that bag? Thank you.
There is some talk by the mall to bring some other stores in and do like a life center like they've done in other areas, but that's a couple of years down the road probably, so, but your point is well taken. Brings us to the board comment section. Any board comment?
I just want to congratulate Mr. Hunt again. I know the children will be thrilled, especially my son, you keep an eye on him. Congratulations again.
Adam.
So, first of all, again, the, the early act kids that came here from, from Fertabar, I mean, that was, that was a real eye-opener for me to see kids actively engaging, and, and thanks to the Rotary Club for making that possible, right? To see kids actively engaging in community service and, and being part of their schooling. It's, it's hands-on learning, and it's stuff they'll be able to take with them for the rest of their lives. And then the last thing, of course, for me is, this time of year is always great, the STEAM Expo that's run, I'm a STEAM STEM educator, and I've, I've been with it from the beginning, David Jeanette and the rest of the, the folks, Mr. Stanley, who was mentioned before, all the teachers that come out, all the students that come out, the, the companies. It's, it's, for those who ever enjoyed the, the idealism of something like a World's Fair, Epcot Center, it's the best we can do on our limited budget here in Neshamie. And if you have kids that are really, like, like one or two of my kids are really inspired by science, technology, engineering, art, and math, it is a great night and a lot of fun, and it's an eye-opener even for the parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Oh, you don't want to be late, do you? Mr. Hunt, congratulations, glad to see you onboard. I don't know if a lot of people know that Mr. Hunt spent almost a full year here at Pecessing, filling in, and has done such an excellent job, and welcome him to the, the administration end, and great to see you, brought your son along, too. That's, you were going to get the job anyway, you didn't have to bring the kids. To the Fertabar Early Act Club, that was a great presentation, and it's amazing what these kids do today at this, this age level, and to the teachers who, you know, keep them involved and, and work with them in these areas, it's, it's a great job done by all. Talking to, I think it was Mr. Warren, unfortunately, retail is suffering for all the reasons that you mentioned there at the podium. Our biggest employer doesn't pay property tax, only ninety-five percent, and there's reasons for that, and you can make that argument. The mall is suffering, that's our biggest revenue, single revenue stream, and has really, you know, helped this district for years, but they can't rent the big box stores anymore, and that's where the big revenue comes in at. Sesame Place is capped with a, an amusement tax of five hundred thousand, so no matter how much money Sesame Place makes, the amusement tax shares five hundred thousand dollars. So, like all things, unfortunately, in the state, property owners, where the buck stops, and everything gets, you know, transferred to them. Earlier this year, the governor announced new budget, there is more educational funding. He also introduced a new revenue stream that he hopes to, to get, it's called Restore Pennsylvania. Problem is, is nothing in there is for education, and nothing in there will help out the property owner. They're talking about raising four and a half billion dollars through bonds, and then using that for infrastructure, and you can make arguments for infrastructure and all the other things. But the biggest single liability in this district, which still remains the unfunded pension liability, there's no proposals from this governor on the table to do anything with that. Out of this four and a half billion dollars that he wants to raise from a Marcella shell tax, none of that's going to impact the property owners of this district or anywhere in Pennsylvania. Fifty percent of our twenty-eight million dollar bill, fourteen million dollar net on the pension system, fifty percent of that has to come directly from you, the property owners, and there's not a thing that we can do to change that. So, we don't have the ability to create revenue streams. That's not something that the legislator has given us the ability to do. We can only deal with what's put in front of us. So we're trying to be creative, we're trying to do what our best to lessen the blow, but I just had another conversation on this issue with, with our state rep, and he explained to me about this initiative and why he won't be supporting it, because he wants pension money out of it, and right now, the, the government, governor's not entertaining that pension money will come out of this, this offering. So, they're up there trying, we need everybody, can't be just this board. Yes, this board tries to be as active we can, we try to engage what we can, but we're just like you guys, too, we're, you know, we only have so much time, you know, this is our volunteer job, you know, we're doing the best we can, but the people, if the people don't start speaking up and telling them enough's enough, you got to fix the problems, we're never, no matter who's up there, it's not going to get, it's not going to get fixed. Thank you all for coming out, and have a pleasant evening.
Just want to get back to your question, Mr. Rotis, that private schools who are allowing for-profit entities run portions of their district, typically, those are charter school involvements, where a charter school's being run by a for-profit entity. There's no conversation here in Neshamie for that type of engagement.
Any other comments? Like to make a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Motion passes seven to zero.